I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Doctor Corleone?
Here.
Doctor Brown?
Yes.
Doctor Kane?
Here.
Doctor Kara?
Here.
Doctor Morella?
Here.
Doctor Snowby?
Here.
Doctor Palmer?
Here.
Doctor Richel?
Here.
Doctor Chan?
Here.
And Zion Pott?
Here.
For.
Please rise from the floor, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, the nation under God, indivisible, and every and every one.
Can you read this Jersey Open Public Law statement?
...
Uh, thank you. Okay, we're from our high school students. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Ready to start grade soon?
Yep, totally. Um, on the sports score, the boys varsity hockey team has the current undefeated record of six and out, which is one of their highest number of wins in years. Their next game is on December eighteenth versus Mount Olive at Menin Arena at five forty-five PM. The bowling team is currently three and oh in conference play and won the tournament of Crusader Classic on Saturday. The Montpelot Track team will be having their first track meet at True University this Thursday.
Uh, regarding our school's clubs, the Montpelot Township High School's robotics team competed at the VEX regional competition on Saturday, December seventh. They are three of our teams' quarterfinal, one team won design award and one team qualified through VEX for vice New Jersey state championships, which will take place in Cherry Hill. Um, friends that traveled to Princeton on Saturday, December seventh. Overall, the team won first place in sweeps. Highlights include senior Christina Oak is in first in exempt, junior Jaga is in placing second in humorous interpretation, and junior Noah Wainkosh placing first in original inventory.
Great. And for information about our school, on the September eleventh, Montpelot Township High School held their annual winter concert with our orchestra, choir, and band performing. The students, under the direction of Mr. Havington, Mr. Lynch, and Mr. Corlebechin, performed wonderfully. The evening events were introduced by Mr. Sanford and Mr. Fleischman. Now, we recently sponsored a door decorating contest to raise school spirit during the holidays, with over twenty homerooms signed up to participate. Each homeroom stayed after school to help decorate the doors with a variety of themes.
And as for future events, Key Club is caroling tomorrow at the Chelsea. Are you gonna participate?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Good. Well, thank you, and have a good grade.
Thank you.
And happy holidays. Okay, Doctor Green?
Good evening, everyone. I have a number of, um, short reports to make. Uh, the first one is about our limited English proficiency data report. Each year, um, our school district, um, provides assessment to our English, uh, limited English proficiency students, and we are, um, asked to meet a certain proficiency rate and gain, um, um, a certain amount each year toward a target goal, as we are to do with all our other students in the district. So we recently received, um, a report, um, about that, and there are three areas that we are, um, assessed in. Uh, these are called, um, annual measurable achievement objectives, AMAOs. Um, and we met our objectives in two of the three areas, but not the third. Uh, the two areas where we did meet our objective is related to the annual increase in the number or percentage of children attaining English proficiency by the end of each year. We also met our goal in relating to the district meeting its progress target for the LEP subgroup at the district level. In the one area we did not, it relates to making annual increases in the number or percentage of children making progress in learning English. And progress is defined as a specific increase in a scale score points in the access test, which is taken by our, um, English language learners. Um, the target goal in that objective, uh, measurable objective where we did not meet the, um, goal was seventy-nine percent, we scored at seventy-one percent. The difference in making that goal or not making that goal was two students. If two additional students had passed, we would have been right around the seventy-nine percent mark, because we don't have a lot of students in that category. So, um, because of that, Andrew Salaji, our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, um, and Lisa Howard, our supervisor for oral language in ESL, will be creating an improvement plan, and I know Lisa is already, uh, big on working on that, um, and working with our ESL teachers in this area.
Any questions, from the board?
The second area I wanted to report on is our high school graduation rate. Across the nation, school districts are now being asked to compute graduation rates in very specific ways. Years ago, school districts, um, really used their own criteria for deciding what it meant for a child to graduate, whether a child graduated four years or five years, whether or not, um, they graduated the specific types of diplomas or alternative kinds of diplomas. So what has happened, in the same way that there's been more of a, I guess, um, commonality across the nation with regard to Common Core assessments and Park assessments, and so Common Core curriculum, Park assessments, there's now begun to be a more common way to assess, uh, graduation rates, so that states and school districts can be compared apples to apples instead of in their own, uh, their own ways. So I'm very pleased to tell you that, um, uh, that for us, uh, this has meant, uh, actually that our graduation rate is even higher than it's been over the last two years. Um, by way of example, um, for the graduating class of, um, of two thousand, uh, eleven, we had a ninety-seven point nine four graduation rate. For the class of two thousand twelve, uh, ninety-six point nine five, and for the graduation class, uh, of last year, which again is that now common way it's looked at across the nation, we're at ninety-eight point eight one. Um, one of the highest, um, rankings of all the school districts that I could, uh, could see across, um, across Morris County and across most of the state, and so we did very, very well. At again, ninety-eight point, uh, eight one percent graduation rate.
Is there any one particular thing that contributed?
I don't think so. I, I think because our graduation rates over the last three years are still pretty close, I think we were probably computing it in a very fair and honest way, and now using that standard measure that everyone else is using. Um, so I think our, I don't know, I see our high school principal, Doug Sanford's out here. Um, I think that our high school administration and all our teachers, um, throughout the district deserve a lot of credit, uh, that our students are, um, meeting the criteria and graduating, um, in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Congratulations to the high school. Any questions?
Okay, I've got, uh, two other, uh, announcements. The first one is a very, very positive announcement, as is the second one. So, uh, we just recently found out that, uh, it was our science teacher, Kathy Ernst, has been named president of the New Jersey Science Teachers Association for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. She'll continue to work in the science field, sharing her dedication and passion for all aspects of discipline. Um, so we're very pleased and proud of, um, Kathy for this wonderful accomplishment, being president of the New Jersey Science Teachers Association. And, um, the last announcement I'd like to make is this evening I'll be asking the board to vote on the, um, appointment of, uh, a district communications officer. This is a position that was recommended for us to, um, bring to the district, uh, behalf of our communications committee, let's say, Board of Education Committee. Doctor Matt Kane chairs that committee, um, and, uh, they asked or authorized us to, uh, look for a half-time position to fill this, uh, important role in our district, to be able to better communicate, uh, with our community, our parents, our students, um, particularly around social media, moving us in that direction. And, um, um, we did a extensive interview process, and, uh, we're very pleased to announce that Susan Farinello, uh, is our choice, and Susan is sitting out there already tonight. So, um, uh, later I'll be asking the board, uh, based on a recommendation, to approve that appointment, and, um, starting date of the acquisition will be July second, uh, two thousand fourteen, uh, January second, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you. Questions?
So, now we're up to a presentation, and in a moment I'm gonna introduce David Tubs, who is, um, our supervisor of humanities. The Board of Education is aware that last year, we, uh, began a research project in the area of humanities, after we had a successful first year in science research. I see again Doug Sanford, our principal, and Ken Azdeck, our assistant principal here at the high school, are here to, uh, support David tonight. Um, and David would like to, um, after observing the program for, uh, almost a half-year now, and Andrew and I have had a chance to observe the program as well, um, after assessing the program, um, I know David is interested in expanding that program next year, and the board might expect to see that in the, uh, budget as we go forward. So tonight David's gonna do a presentation about the research of the humanities program, uh, let you know all about it, how it's working, and in a few minutes, he's also gonna ask for the board's indulgence to ask the board members and our, uh, community members who are here to leave this room and to, uh, go to the, uh, Media Center, uh, where he has some, um, other, other parts of the program to show us. So, David, thank you for being here. You'll probably wanna use the microphone so the, uh, camera can hear you.
Thank you. It's been an exciting year of putting together this, uh, humanities research program, which works with both social studies and English. One of the things that we very much wanted to try to accomplish was to find a way to engage all students in an extraordinarily meaningful way to achieve not only understanding of the content, but the skills that they're going to need to succeed once they leave the high school. And so it kinda started from that point, um, and, and it builds, and I can't emphasize enough how important it was that there was a team of people working closely together through the district to make this happen. So while I'm standing here alone right now with the introduction, it's important to realize that there were teachers, uh, other administrators, and you'll see them, uh, once we go down to the classroom in the Media Center. Um, you know, the technology department, the teacher, coach for technology, all of these people came together to really make this work, and I'm really proud to say that we've done more than we anticipated in the beginning. Students, by a measure of the Danielson model which we're using, have engagement that is off the charts. And students of, of all levels and previous academic achievement, it's absolutely amazing. So if you could just imagine for a moment, a world where students can't wait to get to class, if you can imagine a world where students might be spending too much time, by some measures, at home working on things, but it's because they're so excited about it that they can't seem to stop. If you can imagine a world where students are coming out of their classes with great abilities to enter into discovery and research, with skills in management, project management, leadership, and so on, even students who might have kind of tried to hide in the back of the class in the past. If you're imagining those things, for a moment you can stop, because I'm gonna bring you to a place where those things are real. And it's not utopia, but it's close. It's close, and it's designed and being implemented for the first time right here at Montpelot Township. So if you'll come with me to the Media Center, I'll show you how it works.
Thanks for, for coming on this little bit of a field trip. As I mentioned in the cafeteria, this is a project that has many people who've had their hands in it and have helped shape it. Um, Mr. Kilnawski in the English department, Mr. Sam Filippo in Social Studies, we have Mr. Thompson, who's the technology director, who's been instrumental in making all of the pieces click and fit together, um, as well as many others, uh, including our teacher coach, Andrea Wallace. But we're gonna share a little bit of this with you tonight, including with the students, because one of the things that it's very much focused on is being student-centered. So while we'll kind of open it up and show some perspective, we'll let them kind of take the rest of the show. And with that?
All right, thanks, Mr. Tubs. Um, we thought since the school musical this, uh, spring was gonna be the Wizard of Oz, that for those of us old enough to remember, we, we'd started a little in black and white. Um, for those of us who, who lived in Kansas for a long time, um, in the past, and, uh, the past is not too long ago, six months or so, uh, we had most of our students in a traditional setting, and we had these nice models, some of them you see here tonight. Uh, not staged at all, right? And, uh, these photographs were all taken by Jacob over here, he's got artistic on us, but from this angle you can see they all have the same textbook. Basically, one source, English classroom, uh, as well as in the history classroom.
Okay. And, uh, as you can see in this example, in the past, on various English and history courses, and maybe even a lot of different academic courses, the material is, uh, brought to the student in, in a lot of, in a variety of different ways, but from the teacher, um, I guess you could say through lecture, PowerPoints, outlines, whatever the case may be, but you can see that the, uh, students are sitting there, um, basically just staring at the teacher, and that is pretty much how, how things are supposed to get inside here, so, um, go on from there.
Absolutely. All right, and so, not that this ever happened in my class, you know, but, um, sometimes when you present an, an activity to the whole group, uh, people get distracted, or the previous, you know, evening takes over, or, uh, a social conversation, um, every once in a while someone actually shows up with a pen, you can see that in the back. And look, I, we gotta make it a little bit light, so I'm not saying that, uh, this was every day, or it still is every day in anyone's classroom by any means. Um, but, you know, as we move forward, you'll see the shift.
Okay. Uh, in, uh, this photo, you see a student who is taking a traditional style assessment. Um, I think, uh, all of us in this room, uh, in the past, and not too long for us, six months ago, were all taking traditional, traditional style assessments, uh, multiple choice tests, matching with fill in the blank, maybe essay, short answer, those kinds of assessments, and, uh, they were all assessed in the same way, so, this would be the perspective.
And in the end, you know, you, you had your paper passed back to you, and you saw that big grade, Nicole's never gotten a C minus in her life, that's what it says there on the page. But her grandmother, who was my history teacher, you know, and Lizard, gave me plenty of those, so. Uh, certainly, you know, there was less time for, uh, student-teacher interaction. You handed those papers back, you moved on quickly to the next unit. Uh, and if a student had a question, it was come at lunch, come at school, try and find a time when the teacher wasn't in class to discuss what had gone on. So now we're moving, uh, slowly out of Kansas, um, and so we're gonna turn this over, um, to the students and let them go from there. Christian was the one who set us up, uh, with this, so, uh, let's start.
All right, so, uh, in two thousand thirteen, this is how the class has been run so far this year. We have laptops out on the tables, and it's a much more research-based class, and, uh, I think it's just a greater, better way to learn.
Uh, now, we, we use different resources rather than, oh, wait.
So the students are presented with a topic, time period, or an idea. I remember when we were talking about Beowulf, when we were first introduced to the novel, we first did some research on the Anglo-Saxons, and I thought that was a very interesting way to get into the topic, doing some background information, uh, kinda on our own with our internet sources in front of us, uh, to kind of just get an introduction to the topic that we were learning about.
And some of those internet resources that we use, um, we actually had an assignment where, uh, we got a list of questions, and the way we answered them is we could only use YouTube videos, um, and that was just a different way of doing research, rather than just Googling a bunch of questions and, you know, writing stuff down.
Can I introduce, okay?
Sure.
Do you just wanna tell them a little bit about some of the resources that, um, we utilize in, uh, US two, in terms of different perspectives?
So like usually, like, you, everyone's sort of PowerPoint and like, like Word, right? Here what we're doing is we're actually using Prezi and like new technology, like, with, uh, the books you, like, that you can see, we're actually using those to our advantage in creating like, more like techno, like technological, like advancement, like, uh, PowerPoints and like, as like for the, we're using Prezi to create, uh, like a presentation for you guys today.
All right, uh, we discuss and learn at different paces, all of us do, we all learn differently, so, uh, this has personally helped me a lot in class, because sometimes I will fall behind, especially in the English curriculum. And, uh, and so, you know, it's good to just have a laptop in front of me, it makes me more comfortable with what I'm learning, and it's, it's great, 'cause if you fall behind with the, the regular, how we've been being taught the past few years, you kinda have to get dragged along with the class. And when you're learning at a different pace with your own research materials, it does help out a lot, it makes you a lot more comfortable.
So like prior to this class, I was always, uh, like memorizing like lots of facts. Here I'm actually learning like what I need to know, and like, like Miss Sefley, she lays like a great foundation for us, so rather than having like fifty words you've memorized for the test, she'd give you a topic, and you would research that top, you would, out of like fifty topics, you'd pick one topic, and you'd get at least like about three weeks to just research and however, like however way you would present it, which is great.
So, uh, in the class, uh, you're presented with a topic, um, for example, my history class, uh, American imperialism was the unit of our choice, and, uh, in researching that unit, we had to come up with a topic, so for example, uh, the Russo-Japanese War was the one that I chose, and there were several different ways that you could present to the class, uh, how you researched that program, uh, topic. So I chose to do it in a website, and you can actually look it up, and, uh, rather than in a traditional class of me getting a book, popping it down in front of me, memorizing facts about a war where I'll learn very minimal about, and probably won't remember at all, I, uh, became a little mini master of it.
Um, just like Noah said, I did my topic was the USS Maine, and I did a documentary, I made a video, and unlike other classes, I wouldn't be able to make a video like I did, because I was able to take all the information, some videos from YouTube, some information from websites, and all my primary and secondary sources into the presentation itself.
Um, I just wanted to say that I prefer the research for humanity pilot program a lot more due to the fact that it's just so much more beneficial. The program's based on like individual paces and like needs. So, me, um, last year, the old way, my history class was run, it was like, you know, the basic textbook, and everyone learns from the same source, and the teacher grows at the same pace, and if I had questions, I was like more shy, so I didn't really, you know, wanna ask and interrupt the class with my questions. So I like that there's one-on-one with the teacher, because, um, it suits my like individual needs, and I don't have to necessarily like waste time hearing other people ask questions I already know the answer to, and other people don't have to like waste time hearing questions that I have that they already know the answer to, and it's just, um, a more well-run program because all of the students get a lot out of it, 'cause it's at their individual pace and needs.
We wanted to offer, um, at least half the time we have here tonight for any, uh, questions or clarification from any of the students or Miss Sefley, if I'm wrong.
How many classes are there?
Go ahead.
In, uh, the eleventh grade soul studies program, there are five that I currently teach, uh, four at the grade level, and, uh, four at, or I'm sorry, one at, at one other level, so I have five total, and.
I have the same, uh, for the twelfth grade.
And so when you're in a class, whichever district or the English, um, the class chooses a topic, or you individually choose a topic?
The teacher usually presents a broad idea or a broad, uh, topic, and then we kinda hone in on one specific aspect of it, and then when we present in front of the class, we're hearing everybody else's little bits and pieces of it, so it really helps to, when you have a little small piece of it, it helps you to get a bigger picture of that small piece, and then when everyone shares, it really helps get a larger picture of it altogether.
Where do you see this going actually? Well, uh, we could go a lot of places. I think, um, a couple of the things that'll dictate that are, you know, how we advance the tools. Uh, we've got a wonderful card over there that's an advancement from this, to store, uh, our Chromebooks, which will help them last, but we wanna move beyond Chromebook, so podcasts to help, uh, students who aren't the ones to hop up in front of the room, but maybe could record their own voice and hear their own voice for poetry readings, um, in the English classroom, maybe Shakespeare stuff, basic, uh, presentation skills, uh, videotaping pieces, uh, for comparisons, one of the things we're talking about for Shakespeare, this year's comparison, um, performances from Macbeth, to allow the students to understand how things are staged, costuming, uh, inflection of words. We're following the curriculum as it's written. If you blew that further open, we've got more options.
One of the things too that we've been experimenting with a lot, and you can see it right here, and it's one of the reasons I wanted everybody to come here rather than another location, we've been experimenting with furniture and the environment itself, and how it impacts the way in which students are able to learn. Um, so if you take a look at the desks, the traditional desks, which is what nearly all the classrooms have now, we've taken some of the furniture that wasn't being used for different, you know, from the Media Center and other places, and we've tried to rearrange it to try to change it into a more modern learning environment, and see how that impacts it. And, uh, one of the things that we've found is it, is it has a significant effect, we think, um, on students' ability to treat the room as more of a workshop rather than a factory production method.
I have a question. The science research program is tracked so that the students will eventually select a topic and follow it through, for a multi-year process, a three-year process. Is that model also being considered or being worked on? In other words, is this the preliminary year? That they're learning how to research in different ways of putting that together?
Well, I mean, this is, one of our, the science research program is something that we study early on, because it was happening right here, and it makes, you know, sense to, to look at that, and it was part of the inspiration for this. But we're taking a different tact than just that, um, I mean, it's a magnificent program, it's affiliated with University of Albany and so on, but what we're trying to design here is something that, um, is able to be done on a much wider scale. So, so I guess the short answer to your question is no, um, but we're trying to put something together where all students could learn this way and have the tools and, and opportunities to, to learn these skill sets and, and have this experience.
So do you mean that eventually you would like this, is the vision to, for it to be a class where eventually every high school student would cycle through, because of the skills of teachers?
Well, I mean, I would very much, I mean, pending, you know, the type of success we're having, continuing, yes. I mean, it's something we're, we're gauging very regularly to see how it's working, but yes, I think ultimately, you know, with that success, what I would like to see is in the humanities, which is really the only area I'm studying for, um, that all students, particularly at the non-honors level, um, are able to engage in this sort of thing, because one of the things that's really interesting is honors or not honors, we just had a report, you know, almost all of our students are, are graduating and they're going on, most of them to, to colleges, and they need to have these sorts of skills, abilities, and so on. And it's not only about understanding, you know, about English twelve, or, or all of the Englishes, or, or all of the histories for that matter, the contents are important, but it goes beyond that. How are you going to take that and apply it? They're learning to be project managers, they're learning to be leaders in a specific topic that they drill significantly down into. So you have a class of twenty-five students. So you have a class of twenty-five students, all of whom, all of whom get to be a leader in a meaningful and real way on something they're an expert in. Um, and those are just invaluable, I think. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did.
Come on, Ella, just one other comment about that. I think that the difference between the science research program, which I think is a different, um, aspect of, of the curriculum, is that what they're doing really is still reflecting the Common Core standards, um, it's not deviating from it, it's approaching it in a more authentic, student-centered kind of way. Um, and you've heard me and the board's heard me talk about this kind of education, um, as, as I think being more meaningful, particularly as we are sending our kids out into the world at this, at this time. Um, the kinds of skills that they're learning and working on, I think are those skills that they'll need for college and beyond.
Thank you.
Dr. Free, so do you, do you feel that we're going to move past or forward from this humanities class and have this type of learning in our other classrooms?
Well, you know, I, I think an interesting question for the students would be, um, I guess I'd almost ask them a dual question. Um, you've all been in quote, I'll call them a more traditional environments, classroom environments for, for much of your, your learning and now you're experiencing this kind of environment in either the, with either English or, or your social studies. And I wonder which they prefer, learners, and which they feel they're getting more, um, more knowledge from, so to speak, more things that they'll be using. But before you answer that, I think that the science research program and what has happened so far in this research program are examples of where I hope our classes are, are headed. But maybe students would like to answer the question I asked, how do you feel about this kind of learning and?
I prefer this type of learning purely because I think it's like more beneficial and I get more out of it because it is one-on-one with the teacher, you are at your own individual pace. And also, like last year in the more traditional environment, um, I wasn't interested in history so like I didn't bother to like memorize this list of facts about like United States presidents. Like here, since it's individual and you make your own presentation on like what you're interested in and what you wanna present to your other classmates, it's, it's more fun, so I'm more interested in it and like I found that was easier to like learn things and it, the facts stuck with me, so I get more knowledge out of this program.
It feels a lot less forced. You are able to do everything at like Jen said, at your own pace instead of worrying about pacing yourself for studying for a test. If you're studying for a test, you're worrying about it and stressing out about it compared to being in this kind of course, when you can just do all the research and make a presentation to show your entire class so they can get your perspective on the topic.
Beyond the presentations, are there other types of assessments in the class or?
Uh, yes, we've had quite another interesting one. Some of the ones you saw there, the, the website from the English classroom, uh, we had a Beowulf art project. One of the young men whose, uh, artwork is posted out here produced a, a clay frieze, did research on a, a specific scene from Beowulf and then used his talents. Uh, but we have had apps produced in addition to actual programming language done, which took significant time. The students did a little write-up for it. Uh, we've had plenty of film reviews, you know, and there's still traditional writing that goes along with it, but, um, I've not offered a standard multiple choice, fill-in-the-blank objective test, but yes, plenty of other, um, portfolio assessment, you know, giving students credit for, uh, the daily work that happens and still keeping up with that requirement, still keeping up, I guess, that traditional phrase, course rigor, you know, still holding them accountable for what's going on.
If I could just, um, just piggyback a little bit on, on what, uh, Mr. Kalnaski said. Um, it's really important for me through every unit that I go through, whatever end product the students are creating, that they have some kind of assessment, different types, especially in terms of writing. So you have a topic at hand, they're gonna be researching and exploring that topic, consulting with a variety of primary sources and secondary sources in which they need to analyze and decide which is reputable, which is not. They bring all that information together, they decide what's important, which is reputable, which is not, and they incorporate that into either a presentation of their choice, it could be hand-created, it could be digital, as we've seen a lot of examples. And also the written part, which is very important for me, the students are constantly writing, they're constantly taking pieces from the sources, um, analyzing them, putting them into their own words and deciding how they fit into the bigger picture. So, um, from writing assessments to digital to everything, um, we're, um, at least I know I am and from conversations Kurt and I have had, um, we're doing different types of those things so that we're, um, seeing the skills that they are, um, developing and utilizing. I can't tell you how many kids have told me just up until this point that, um, you know, they didn't know that there was anything beyond Wikipedia, which is really important as a history teacher or anything. I know we've all used Wikipedia every day, I do myself, but, you know, you don't know something, you type it in and Wikipedia comes up first and they're just realizing that there's this whole other world in terms of sources. And being a history teacher, like there's so many rich sources out there to make things come alive that we can access now that we're doing a program like this, that they're diving into things and discovering things that they never would've been able to do with those books that you see on that desk. So I think, um, you know, that kinda, this kinda lends itself to just discovering and exposing and, and developing a lot of those skills, so.
If I could make one last statement, I think from the teacher angle, this has been pretty, um, pretty much a leap.
Yeah.
I've had a very traditional education. I went to school here in Montville and then to Villanova, Seton Hall. Um, so there's probably, you know, nothing liberal about my experience or more open about my experience in a classroom, you know? I, I learned the canon and, and, you know, I believe in it. So for me as a teacher, um, this was a massive leap, but it's been a creative joy in many ways because I've gotten to work one-on-one with these students a lot sooner in the year than I would've in the past. So I'm, this will sound a little bit silly, but I picked up names in the room a lot faster this year and, uh, not because I handed out note cards and asked them a personal fact, but because I sat down and made a connection. And they got up right away and gave presentations, um, not that everyone's comfortable doing that, but I saw students get up and do readings, ESL students, and they told me it was because they felt comfortable, um, in this small atmosphere and that translated into the larger classroom. So it will be a leap for us to move, I believe, beyond the two of us, uh, into our respective departments and not everyone, uh, I think is gonna be comfortable doing it. Giving up the curriculum and giving up the control of feeding the information was a big deal. Um, but I really think it's working, I, I think these folks are, are a group.
I certainly like it a lot more. I mean, coming into English class for the past three years, I haven't really enjoyed coming in and just reading out of the book and, you know, writing down notes from that. I like coming in and researching on a laptop and figuring out stuff for myself online. It helps a lot, makes me enjoy the class.
Yeah, I agree. Like, coming into English class is like actually like fun now, like, I never thought I'd say it, but like I actually like look forward to like coming into this room. And when I go to like other classes, I notice like I really don't like sitting at a traditional desk and I really don't like to listen to a teacher stand up there for an hour and just lecture and like look at me and ask me like direct questions and like call me out in front of the class when like other, like Mr. Kalnaski would like let everyone do their own thing and come around to you individually and then he could call me out like by myself, which I'm not comfortable with.
We like to call that check for understanding, right?
You can call it that.
Do your homework. Thanks, folks, thanks for your talk.
Thanks. Aren't you happy that you're part of this school district? It's, you know, probably self-serving to say that, but, uh, we're doing some really exciting things here and, and we really have Dr. Free to thank. Uh, all, all we do is kinda stay in the background and let him and his great administration and the wonderful teachers, uh, do what they do best and that's educate our students. So, thank you, thank you, Dr. Free, thank you to the high school, to the, and other administrators involved, to the teachers and to the students. Um, it's very exciting to be part of all of this.
Well, you, you're kind to give me so much credit, but really it belongs to our high school administration, our teachers, um, who are taking these steps forward and, uh, as I think Kurt described, you know, he's, comes from a very traditional, uh, background and he has, talks to me about that and, uh, so he's taken a leap of faith and he's been supported by our administration, the high school, and, um, we're very pleased and moving so, so well.
Thank you.
And I think that's the whole point though, is that you allow them to have the openness and the space to go forward with that thing and, you know, previously you have not had that. So, um, yes, it might be their idea that they're breaking forward, but without someone saying, yes, that's a great idea, go, go for it, uh, you won't get to witness happen.
Yeah, I'm, and appreciate the humility and, and the administration is, and the teachers, but there's vision involved, all of them have that. Thanks.
Okay, um, this is. Meeting's over. Lunchtime. Lunchtime. I have one question, I wanna know why every clock that I see. I know. Because it's your last board meeting, we're not leaving, please. Oh, boy. Okay, business administrator report?
Thank you, Dr. Free, I'll try to make a reading. Um, just a happy report, the National Water Innovation Project has been substantially completed, it's been, uh, fully occupied and it's been, uh, being, uh, being, just a punchless diet that's still being worked on and hopefully over the next two, three, four weeks, uh, they're going to finish that. Periodic program projects, so we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule on this one as well. Um, the High School Guidance Suite is, uh, we're starting to get substantially completed by December very first, uh, along with the bizarre media center classroom, uh, the senior hallway door extension project here at the high school. Uh, we can have both completed by the end of the summer and there are four pieces of that project, we did a little hardware division, um, we're looking to have that finished on by, by the end of January, February later. Um, at this point, the, uh, air conditioning projects, uh, for classroom units installation is substantially completed, uh, the electrical work of the campus and the media centers is ongoing. Uh, we're looking, uh, for the EBR, uh, old purpose renovation that's here in Monmouth, uh, that will happen sometime in April, November, April, where they explore performance, these are a couple units. Then, uh, finally, uh, we can check on the warranty, the store location units and, uh, there's a bit of warranty actually in the mix until, uh, we leave, uh, because it's not strictly similar to the, uh, back. Um, in the last two projects that we're working on are technology projects, the school parking lot cameras, uh, security guard access upgrades in three of our elementary schools, being headed up by our tech and yours, and, uh, we'll include those by the end of this.
Thank you, are there any questions for Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, ask Jim if he would just, uh, also thank Steve Toth, our facilities manager, for his oversight of all of these projects. I know he's a little, he's a job man, so I want, I think you should, the board should acknowledge that.
The board from first. Are there any committee reports? Friggin', I might, uh, well, I'm Friggin'.
I think we've had a meeting since the last board meeting.
Yeah.
C I P, yes. Um, so we met on December fifth, we met on December fifth, we had a, we had, um, Mr. Fleischman come and speak to us regarding his assessment of some, um, some portions of the music program. And so there is some essential scheduling changes and course, course changes, um, offerings in the high school that are subject to review in order to prove the instruction that those children that are enrolled in certain, um, areas, um, uh, which require ensemble performance. We also discussed consistency and score in course titles and the program of studies and there was some discussion about the present earth science and biology courses and the way they fit into the curriculum. There was also an update on Rosetta Stone as, as it is implemented in the elementary schools and oversight is going on by our supervisor report language on that. We discussed some feedback on the new elementary report cards, which were revised this year to reflect the Common Core standards and to add information for the standards. I guess they want me to be done. We've also, we also had a, um, presentation or discussion with the, um, director of guidance regarding bringing, bringing SAT testing to Montville Township High School so that those students of ours who are taking SATs, which is obviously quite a, a substantial number, um, can have advantage of being tested in their home district. So that's being looked into. We have some discussion about the county college fair that's held each year and just an update on that and the kinds of information that is provided for students for the, uh, college fair. Okay, any questions? Okay, and was there policy or like was that the last meeting?
I covered it.
You covered last time, okay, very good. Is that good? Any delegate liaison or, or P T C liaison reports?
Yeah, I attended the recreation meeting last week and, uh, Mrs. Whitney made the committee aware of, of the plans we have for seeking RFPs for the high school renovation on the fields and, uh, naturally there are concerns around scheduling of athletic events and as in the past, it worked very well with Mrs. Whitney, I'm sure we'll continue to do so.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone else? Um, I'll open it now for the public, anyone from the public want to comment on the agenda? Okay, I'll close public participation, motion for items I through O.
Don't move.
And Tom, second? Any discussion on the minutes? Item J. I just wanna bring to the board's attention, uh, to the public's attention, actually, item J three, which is a request for the state of New Jersey to fund fully, uh, unfunded mandates. You can see an amount in there of about six hundred thousand dollars, which covers not all of our unfunded mandates, but some of them, which include, uh, expanded teacher evaluation, Common Core, curriculum development, the PARC assessment and H I D. Uh, the amount is six hundred thousand dollars and just keep in mind that that represents one percent of our two percent cap. So one percent of our two percent cap is going towards items that are mandated to us by the state of New Jersey. So I think that's a really an important number and that's not all of them. I just thought of one this afternoon, of the financial literacy, which is an important class, um, but a year or so ago, we had to hire a full-time teacher to cover that. So that's another salary and, and, and benefits. Any questions, other questions or comments on J? Item K? L? M?
Yeah, just, on the program of studies, I just sort of clear, there's some things that are talked about curriculum concerning both the music program and earth science. Now those are effective since we approved the program of studies, correct?
I would imagine so, yes.
Yes, the, um. The other part is going to be, um, just part of the master schedule.
So it's open for public discussion, yeah?
Okay.
Okay. Just, let me, okay, the program of studies, one significant thing I think is, um, changing, something's been overlooked for a while, but you know, earth science has been a requirement for students for a long time. I know Dr. Free, for a longest time, has been saying that, whatever happens, it's doubling up on the sciences in ninth grade. And I think one of the reasons for it was the fact that a lot of students wanted to take biology in ninth grade, but since earth science was a requirement, they couldn't take biology in ninth grade unless it had to be earth science. Um, the change where earth science is now no longer a requirement for biology, I think is a major step in the right direction. Um, it's gonna open up a lot of opportunities for kids that if they wanna take earth science, it's still there and, um, if they don't, they don't have to be saddled with it to take biology, especially in this days of forced financial literacy courses where that essentially killed elective that a lot of kids had to take. Um, it gives opportunities, I think it's really a step in the right direction and it's something that's been a very long time coming and I, uh, applaud the administration. And, um, so I'll just touch on briefly, there's also been some changes in the music creation. And, um, I'll just touch on briefly, there's also been some changes in the music curriculum for next year, hopefully, that, um, would, hell, it's going to single, up samples instead of break up the way we were doing it. It's a change that's long, long overdue. It was part of the last curriculum report and again, I applaud the administration, it's a step in the right direction. It's fixed a program that I really needed fixing and it's a really great thing, really happy about it.
Thank you, Mike, for those comments. Uh, okay, and, policy? And, oh. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Richel.
Yes.
Mr. Mazzacarroll.
Yes.
Mr. Graff.
I abstain on the following. Uh, the minutes of November 19th. The bill list, check number 74353. I'll say it again, 74353. And also on document M1 over 8. And I vote yes on the rest. Even though Dr. Kane didn't want me to, but I will.
Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Mrs. Nobe?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Uh, yes.
I think that's for you.
Yes.
Chicken.
Okay. Um, and your business, additional reports. Um, I'll just comment that Jackie Manzini attended the town hall meetings and Dr. Freed conducted whenever, sometime from early in December, it's all been a blur. Um, and it was a really good opportunity to hear what's on people's minds. Uh, it was an open town hall meeting on any subject, any topic, uh, and it was beneficial because it was, uh, pretty much unfiltered, whatever you wanted to talk about. And it was a good opportunity for the board to hear, um, concerns of parents and community members outside the realm of board meeting, which tends to be more, um, focused on the agenda and committee reports and this and that nature. And maybe, uh, community members don't really come out to our board meetings, which can be interpreted as a good thing. But it was very well attended and we heard some legitimate concerns, which the administration's working on. So I want to thank Dr. Freed for conducting it and, uh, it was, it was helpful. I'd encourage any, you know, all board members, if they have an opportunity to attend those town hall meetings there at the high school.
Dr. Freed, did you think it went as you anticipated?
Sure. Uh, no, it, no, it, it did.
I think the topics of conversation were expanded and I didn't think anything was...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know, of course, exactly what to expect at meetings like that, so, um, I, I think, you know, it was very respectful. I was very pleased about that, that people really did not talk about personnel, which I asked people, of course, to not to, to contact me directly if they had particular concerns. Um, but I did think that the topics were all interesting. I think they were all meaningful to the people who, who mentioned them. There were a couple of themes, you know, we took some good notes and certainly were looking at those areas as I promised to do. Um, so, yeah, I, I thought the meeting went well. I thought the audience was engaged and participating right through the, uh, end of the meeting. So I was...
Would you consider doing another one?
Sure, absolutely. I, I think...
I think once word gets around that it was actually interesting and, and productive.
Yeah, as I said at the meeting, you know, we might in fact find a particular topic or two that we want to focus on specifically, um, and we would announce that in advance, things that we're looking at perhaps not even to implement for next year, but even the year before, the year after and start that public conversation. But certainly having another open-ended one would be something I certainly do.
You know, I think one of the exciting things beyond, um, what was discussed that night, um, it was just the opportunity for, uh, the community to come to a forum and to speak what's on their mind and to, to say things that were of concern to them. And this is something that I think is another step forward in our ability as a school district to communicate with our parents and with the community. So, uh, it's, it was very positive.
Yeah, Karen, I think one of the other aspects is, is that as parents were talking, they sensed that the administration was listening and was going to act. And I think that's a real positive for the community's understanding.
Absolutely. Um, so, tonight is the last meeting on the Jackie. And, um, you know, I, I'm usually never at a loss for words. I'm usually very well-prepared and I am not. I, I could not wrap my head around the fact that Mrs. Jackie in particular, she's, we've been board members together now for six and a half years. And I really could not wrap my head around the fact that she won't be here anymore. And as many times as I tried to sit down and write something eloquent, I couldn't. Um, maybe when we hand Jackie her plaque, I'll be, uh, you know, more, uh, focused and concrete on what I can say. But tonight, it's, it's been very difficult. I, I did pen a couple of things, um, and for, for you, Tom, um, you've been here less than a year. You stepped up to the plate when, when you needed to fill John's big shoes, um, and you've done so with such professionalism and experience and your knowledge base is phenomenal. And in, in the, in, for the few months you were here, you've been a tremendous asset to the board. And for me personally, as my friend, I'm missing you, um, at, at our board meetings. But I know I, as my friend, I won't miss seeing you. Um, and then it comes to Jackie. And Jackie has served for six and a half years with great distinction. Um, Jackie, you've been an exemplary, an exemplary board member. You embraced the concept of being a good board member wholeheartedly. Um, you're always prepared. But the most enduring part is that you're so brutally honest. And you really keep us in check. You're the person who slaps us on the side of the head to keep us moving in the right direction, keeping us on track. And you're the only one that could get away doing that. And we love you for it. Um, you know, you're, you're, you have such great common sense and, um, you and I, you know, when you came onto the board, you know our past and we weren't always on the same side of the fence, but out of, at, you know, good friendships are forged oftentimes out of adversity. And I would have to say that that's how ours was forged. And I have such respect for you and admiration and I love your family. Um, and I, I just, I just don't know how, we're gonna go on. I mean, you will, because you have to. Um, I'm gonna miss you terribly. And I'll just share with the public a, a very short, brief story and then I know others have things that they want to say. But in years, in years past, and I'm gonna talk about closed session, Steve, so I won't reveal anything, but, um, in years past, um, sometimes the board would perseverate on deception items and we'd get caught up and we'd discuss and discuss and discuss. Our wheels would spin and we wouldn't get anywhere. And we would say, you know, stop, tell each other, stop beating the dead horse. We wouldn't do so much public, although sometimes we did. But oftentimes in close, we would just say, stop beating the dead horse. Well, one of, it didn't take Jackie long. Maybe at our third or fourth closed session meeting, we got into one of those ruts. And all of a sudden, if you remember the Beanie Babies, well, they made one look like a horse. And all of a sudden, flying across the table, she flings down this thing and says, stop beating the dead horse. And, you know, it's, it's exactly what it took for us to say, like, what are we doing? She's right. Um, and, I don't know, I'm gonna stop talking, otherwise I'll start crying. I love you, I love you.
Tom, um, you are the consummate professional and it has, um, been a learning, uh, situation. I, for me, more than anything else, being alongside of you. Uh, you have so much knowledge about how this town runs, so much knowledge about how organizations should run. Um, and I certainly feel that even at my stage of life, um, you have taught me so much that I didn't know in a short period of time. Thanks so much for being here for this period of time. Jackie, uh, it's hard to believe that tonight has come. Um, I've been here five and a half years. There are a few board members, Mike, Charlie, and Karen that are here before me. Uh, as a new board member, uh, I certainly look up to those around me who were here before me. They had experience and, um, they have so much more knowledge than I had. And I sat back and watched and, and over the years, Jackie, I've, I've sat and watched you and over the last few weeks, I've been trying to think and, and, and put my, uh, get my thoughts together in terms of, well, what an attribute you have, uh, that is just so unique and special. And what I came up with is candor, is that, as Karen said, you always...
Unfiltered.
Unfiltered. And sometimes it gets you into trouble.
I try to filter it.
But we all love it and...
But your family's nodding in agreement.
We know her well. Um, no matter whether it's the one-on-one conversation or the exact opposite, which is out in public and at a meeting that's well-attended, uh, you always have been able to come up with what's in your heart, bring it forward and tell it like it is. And that's an attribute that I personally wish that I could emulate and be like you. Um, over the years, being involved with CIT, which is, you know, my early years was, uh, with you was something special because you were so motivated in doing what was best for the school district with respect to that, and more recently on the negotiating team, which took about two years plus. You, Karen, and I, uh, that was a very special moment, which, uh, pulled us together because we had so much time that while we're waiting for decisions from the other side, where we could actually sit and talk and get to know each other. Uh, I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being such a wonderful board member and the friendship that started here, I know is gonna continue eternally.
I'm going to go in the same order and Tom, our time to get on the board has been short. But I think Matt took the words right out of my mouth, the consummate professional insofar that you stepped up when we had an opening to fill. You wanted to keep the board going in the direction it was going. You saw it as being something you could do to help the district, help the community as you've done your whole life. And, um, the wisdom that you gave to us in that short time you were on the board is invaluable. It was a, you know, you saw things that we didn't see, based on your experience. And, um, it's just a short time, you think you've made an impact. And I want to thank you for stepping up for professionalism, for bringing what you had to the table and for wanting to be a part of us. It's been a privilege and I'm to serve with you. Jackie, I actually got to know Jackie really, really through my life, from PTA. You know, on board here, we all have different backgrounds and I think that's one of the things that makes the board work. And with Jackie, we got the, um, the aspect of a person who was, really before I was acting on the board, really I've been very active in PTC, Lazar, I imagine probably Valley too, I can imagine. And, uh, she brought that background to us. Now, her contributions on the board have been wonderful, but the thing that you guys probably don't know is how many times, which is more than not, she'd bring the baked goods into the room back there. And it was a treat, you have to look forward to executive session. The brownies, the cookies, the whole thing. And you know what? It's not an unimportant thing because one of the reasons this board works is because we get along with each other. There's no five against fours, six against threes. We don't always agree on everything, but we not only enjoy each other's company, we have respect for each other. And a lot of that, I credit to Jackie. She brought warmth, she brought a lot of us together. Um, kind of like mom also to the board, she really was. And to logic extent, Jackie, I think for the last six years, you've really been the heart of this board. And that's something we're all going to miss. Thank you so much for your contributions and I'm really, I miss you.
All the nice things that you've been saying, now it's my turn. First of all, Tommy, I'd like to thank you for stepping up last year when we had a vacancy. Uh, I'd also like to thank you for the time that you served in your prior life when you were on the board of ed for three years and president for some of those years. Um, everyone I think in the room knows Tom Mazzacarroll. I guess I've known him the longest because I guess we're two of the, um, more mature people. Uh, Tommy and I probably go back forty, forty-five years. And Tom has served on more commissions and committees for this town. And I don't think we should just say, thank him for serving on board of ed. I think you should thank him for everything that he's done for this community. Tom, as you may or may not know, is retiring soon. And I think that his knowledge, his background, his support for Mottville Township, I hope it will continue because you are one unique individual. And I really thank you for everything that you've done for the board and for the town. Thank you, Tom. Jackie, I've known Jackie for, I guess, eight or nine years now, not a long time. Um, and during the seven years she's been on the board, I think she's been on every committee there is. I think she's been liaison to more groups and PTAs and her dedication to the school board, you, you just can't say enough about it. Jackie and I served on a lot of committees together. Sometimes Jackie and I did not always agree on certain things, but I know Jackie's thinking and I hope mine. We had one reason for being here and that's for the kids. We had no egos, nobody's running for office. We put the time in and we put a lot of time in because we're here concerned about the education for the children of Mottville Township. I think the program we saw a short while ago is indicative of that and hopefully it will continue. I'm sure that everyone will agree that Jackie's number one advantage is knowing the town, knowing the people. And I think that we should thank her for the time that she's put on the board. And I think we should also thank her family because there's been many, many nights during the last seven years where she's not been at home. Thank her husband, Andy, and Andrew, and the two kids. And she's been a very dedicated individual. I would like to again, thank her for the pleasure of working with you. I think it was a, something that I really enjoyed. You're a very valuable board member. I'm gonna believe it or not, miss you greatly. Feel free to bring, make more baked goods in now. She was our in-house baker. You will be missed, but I think you can keep one thing in mind, that you always were here for the children, you always did what was best for the kids, and that's what I think our role is. And I thank you personally for that from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations.
I have a comment. I think it's really ironic, Tom and Jackie have both been mentors to me in very different ways. When I first moved to Mottville, Tom was actually one of the first people I met, pretty early in. And I liked him instantly for his quiet manner and for his absolutely extraordinary dedication to Mottville. Tom was one of the people who very early on encouraged me to become a... Tom was one of the people who very early on encouraged me to become active in the community and supported my first run for the board. And it's a debt to Tom that I can absolutely never repay, other than to offer friendship and really extraordinary gratitude for his service, not just to the community, but really and truly as his role in my life as a mentor and someone that I always looked up to. When I came on board three years ago, Jackie agreed to be my mentor, which I thought was nice. She seemed nice enough, even though I had just run against her. Oh, no, I didn't mean to. And as I've come to know Jackie, I've come to adore Jackie for her dedication, her knowledge of the school district and her knowledge of curriculum is extraordinary, to the point where when she came down, when she stopped serving as the chair of the curriculum committee this year and I took over, it was one of the few circumstances that put me into a cold sweat because there are such enormous shoes to fill. Those are committees and committee meetings that the public does not attend, but the amount of work that Jackie puts into those, into attending all of her meetings, but the extraordinary amount of preparation that Jackie does for each and every meeting that she attends. In fact, I think sometimes she forgets that she's no longer the chair, but that's fine with me. But that's absolutely fine with me and I've made a promise to give me her notes this year. So to Jackie, I also owe a debt of gratitude. I think that the community owes a debt of gratitude. And the wonderful thing about Jackie, in addition to her candor, is I always knew absolutely, no matter what her opinion on any topic was, whether I agreed with her or not, and the disagreements were probably very few and far between. The lodestar for Jackie is what's in the best interest of the children first, foremost, and always, and that's extraordinary. Jackie comes to this job without a political agenda and purely to do what's in the best interest of the children. Thank you.
I've known both of you guys now, probably about the same amount of time. Tom, like Carmela said, helped us with our election initially and Jackie, we actually ran against. But what I do have to say is that I respect both of you immensely. You both gave so much to this town, gave so much to the education system here, and I just want to say thank you to both of you guys.
Tom or Jackie?
Yeah, I'll start. I'm a big star here, Mike. I do know that. I only came on board less than a year ago and I had no doubts that I wanted to serve for that year. I guess the best thing I can say here is that I have been enlightened tremendously by this board itself, but also by the administration. I think this community is going to be served very well, and it has been served very well with such a professional board and especially its leadership, Karen, that I think without it, I think it would be floundering a little bit too, like most committees do without good leadership. However, looking at the administration with Dr. Freed and Casey and Andrea and Jim and their staffs, the respective staffs, I have never worked with a more professional group, with a more intelligent group, and I am very proud to have served. This one year, I did serve three years in the past. It was a lot simpler, by the way. I think you guys are saddled with so much in the way of regulation and infusion from the state, from the federal government, et cetera, the six hundred thousand you mentioned tonight is probably just the tip of it. But I am very proud to have served. It's only one year, but I am very proud to have served with Jackie here as well. And I'll see you guys again, I guess, occasionally, and I hope to see Jackie again. I know sometimes we used to have a little fun with each other, but I do love her, I really do. So, good luck.
I love you guys. I really do. This is very hard for me. It's been a privilege and a pleasure serving the public on this board. I can't imagine a more wonderful, amazing experience. And I have to tell you, I have to, Charlie, you were right, I have to thank my family because without their support, I was away many nights, away from home and family and dinner, I was cooking, and they put up with it and they supported me. And it's allowed me to give back to my community, which is something that my husband taught me was very important to do. And it's allowed me to grow as a person and I feel that I have grown so much in these last seven years, working with all of you. And I thank you for that and I thank my family. We have done as a team such wonderful, wonderful work here. And I know you're just going to continue doing that great work. I have absolute faith that you're just going to continue and we're going to do great things for the kids in Montville. So, thank you all. Charlie, thank you for not really saying me. I appreciate it. I'm going to miss you. I really will.
On behalf of the administration, we thank you both, Tom and Jackie, all of us do. For us to do our work well, it really requires a board of education that can listen carefully, understand the direction that we hope to move forward in as educators, as a community, and hopefully gain your trust and support. And, you know, I thank all nine of our board of education members for that trust and support and tonight particularly, the two of you. Tom, the short time that I have gotten to work with you, I've appreciated your wisdom, your knowledge of the community and the advice that you've given. I think it's been very, very helpful and important. And Jackie, you were a member of the board that hired me and that's been very meaningful to me in particular. And I thank you, Jackie, for your trust over my almost four years here now. So, thank you.
It's been my pleasure. I love you. Our pleasure. I love Tom. I'll open it up to the public now for any comments that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close public participation.
So moved.
And wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Season's Greetings, and a Happy and healthy New Year. See you next year.
Okay.